Good evening. Welcome to the September fourth, two thousand twenty-four City of Minot Planning Commission Meeting. Call the roll.
Bowman.
Here.
Gates. Trudell.
Here.
Iverson.
Here.
Kibler. Johnson. Longton.
Here.
Menham.
Here.
Offertal.
Here.
Pontanilla.
Here.
We have a quorum.
That will stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. I'm going to do a quick introduction. We have a new Commissioner that has joined us this recently, Derek Trudell. I just want to welcome you to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four. Approval of the August twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Move to approve by Pontanilla. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Menham with the second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Close the discussion. Call the roll.
Bowman.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Longton.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offertal.
Yes.
Pontanilla.
Yes.
Trudell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number five point one. Minot First Edition Zone Change Public Hearing Request by Eric Thonkey, representing Orland and Mary Rovig, owner for a request of zoning map amendment rezoning the property from M one Light Industrial to CBD Central Business District. Legal description for the properties lots two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven of block thirty. Minot's First Edition to the City of Minot Ward County, North Dakota. Subject property address is eighteen Third Street Southwest, Southeast. My apologies, Southeast. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
All right. As you can see on the screen, maybe? I'll go on my end here. We'll do it this way. Usually goes over there. On its own. We'll just move it over there. I apologize, technical difficulties. Um, I don't have my notes. Just a moment, please. Sorry. All right, as you can see now, the subject property is bound in black. The three hundred foot buffer is denoted in pink. Uh, property as address is eighteen Third Street Southeast and the applicant is seeking a recommendation to the City Council for a zone change. The zoning is currently M one Light Industrial. The surrounding area is zoned M two, M one, CBD, C two, and P. Uh, the future land use for the subject property is downtown fringe. Downtown fringe, downtown mixed use, public and parks and recreation are adjacent. Here's some photos of the property. This is facing south and northwest showing, uh, property to be renovated. Here's a picture on the left-hand side facing west that shows the property frontage and on the right facing northwest shows the garage properties. It's still not going, huh? All right.
There you go.
Being funky tonight. Sorry about that. All right, here's the photos showing the surrounding area. Here is facing northwest showing the frontage of the property. Have to go back and forth. Uh, here is the finding of fact. They can be found in the staff's written report. All right, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt staff's finding of fact and recommend approval to the City Council for a zoning map amendment from M one Light Industrial District to CBD Central Business District with no conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for city staff? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to the Commissioners for a motion.
I'll move to approve based on staff recommendations and findings of fact.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Vice Chair Bowman and a second by Commissioner Iverson, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. Any discussion?
Um, just for public, you know, consideration, I'm really glad to see that this property is moving over into the Central Business District. I know this is something that as a community we've been pushing towards. Um, Central Business District has a lot of amenities, I think, for a property owner to build some density, some, uh, yeah, there's just a lot fewer restrictions and some really, really good things that can happen with that. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see this happening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Bowman.
Yes.
Iverson.
Yes.
Longton.
Yes.
Menham.
Yes.
Offertal.
Yes.
Pontanilla.
Yes.
Trudell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on. Five point two Livingston's Seventh Edition Conditional Use Permit. Public Hearing Request by John Coughlin, representing Metallar Holdings LLC, owner for a request of a conditional, conditional use permit for a truck stop on the property zone C two General Commercial District. Legal description for the property is block two Livingston Seventh Edition to the City of Minot, North Dakota. The subject property is unaddressed. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
Thank you Chairman Offertal, and I apologize for that. I believe I have the technical difficulty sorted out now and the PowerPoint is working the way it should, so. Uh, again, here you can see that the subject property is bound in black. Um, with the three hundred foot buffer is denoted in pink. Subject property is unaddressed and the applicant seeks a recommend, or seeks approval of a C U P for a truck stop on a C two zoned property. This is the proposed site plan as it was provided in the application packet. Here's a little bit better. That was a very high view. This one allows, you know, to actually see the site without the surrounding area, but this is a, the same site plan zoomed in a little for you to see better. The zoning is C two, uh, general commercial district. The surrounding area is zoned egg, C two, R one, and R three. We're moving into the future land use map designation for this particular property is urban residential. However, staff would like to note that we believe that this designation was placed on this corridor in error. Um, after discussion with the staff that was involved with the creation of the plan and due to the fact that this designation doesn't follow any of the broader goals of our comprehensive plan, essentially it putting apartment buildings adjacent to the highway is a bad idea. Or not a great idea. We'll put it that way. The staff has initiated, uh, an application that will be viewed by the Planning Commission next month, uh, to wrap in both that light industrial over on Highway two and this into one application. With a recommendation to change this to a general commercial designation, which is, would follow along with previous comprehensive plans designation for this area. So this kind of just outlines the area in blue here where we are recommending that, uh, future land use designation be changed to general commercial to fit with both its current development patterns and, uh, recommended development patterns for a highway corridor. So right now, urban residential is the future land use designation. However, we believe that's an error and are recommending that it be changed. Here is some photos of the property. Uh, on the left, you can see facing north, you'd see Highway two in the background, uh, facing northwest down at twenty-first Avenue. Uh, on the left, you are facing northeast here, looking at the intersection of thirteenth, uh, street and Highway two in the background. And on the right-hand side, uh, facing the thirteenth street access for the property. Here's the staff's finding of fact. It can be found in the staff's written report. Staff recommendations are fairly lengthy on this one, and it has to do with a lot with engineering and traffic considerations. So the staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the staff finding of fact and recommend approval of, or, and approve the conditional use permit for a truck stop with the following conditions. The develop must generally comply with the site plan as, uh, submitted. A stormwater management plan is required. A site plan is required for development. Uh, the pedestrian corridors along thirteenth street are required and sidewalks along twenty-first Avenue. Uh, traffic impact study is required for future development and it must be reviewed by the city and N D D O T. Any required improvements must be paid for by the developer and included in a development agreement approved by City Council. There should be no access points on thirteenth street southeast. Existing access point will be removed, uh, by the developer per city ordinance. Access on twenty-first Avenue will meet spacing requirements. Uh, sanitary sewer fees are required for future development and approved traffic impact study must be possessed by the City of Minot prior to a building permit being issued. And site grading and preparation activities may occur upon approval of the stormwater management plan and prior to the building permit issuance. With that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
Um, I have a hunch we're going to have a pretty robust conversation about this today, uh, but I just want to maybe zero in on this. I, am I correct in assuming that, uh, in reading reports provided by the city and in the packet? The biggest maybe point of contention that we're going to be looking at today is that recommendation number six that deals with the thirteenth street access. And figuring out kind of how everything revolves around, around that. Is that my correct understanding?
Chairman Offertal, Vice Chair Bowman, you are correct. That seems to be the area of contention between the city's engineering department and the developer.
Okay, so as we kind of look at this, um, the other nine recommendations pretty generally agreed upon between all parties as we've gone through D R T and, and everything with this particular project.
That is correct, yes.
Then finally, um, just to give some maybe context or clarity for, uh, the public or for our, our members, I just want to confirm that this is the same project that we, um, approved back in April of twenty-three, I think, but it's coming back to us again.
Chairman Offertal, Vice Chair Bowman, yes, that is correct. They did secure land entitlements through a conditional use permit on April fourth of twenty twenty-three without substantial construction beginning within twelve months. That caused the conditional use permit to expire and those land entitlements to go away. So the applicant was informed that they need to reapply for a conditional use permit in order to move forward with the project at this time.
Cool. So for clarity and just kind of understanding, the, the terms of the first one kind of expired, and so we're starting from scratch again. This isn't tweaking or editing per se. It's, it's a whole new, um, application.
At this point, the conditions of approval are almost identical to the conditions of approval that were presented, um, at the meeting a year ago, a year and a few months ago, other than the traffic impact study has now been completed and submitted to the City of Minot's Engineering Department, and they have provided comments in the form of the memo provided to you tonight. So that is their comments on the traffic impact study as it was submitted to the engineering department.
Thanks. Any further questions for city staff? Any further questions for city staff?
I...
Go ahead.
I just had one question. Just maybe a little bit of clarity. I see truck stop, but when I look at, and I remember when we approved it, it lacked rest area for overnight trucking or, you know, overnight... And then, did I see someplace in the packet where it said it was noted that this is not a truck stop?
Chairman Offerdall, Commissioner Menem, this is a truck stop due to the considerations that need to be made for the multiple diesel pumps and the accommodation for 18-wheeler trucks within the site. That circulation within the site needs to be accounted for and any adverse effects on neighboring properties need to be addressed through the conditional use permit. Just because there are, they are planning to have large 18-wheeler trucks circulating through the site. Some amenities inside of the store aren't provided that you might see in other truck stops, but that's not what's driving the classification of truck stop. It's the external circulation of large vehicles on the property.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, I've got two questions. So, the designation of the truck stop. Is there specific requirements that designate something that are like a formal outline of what designates a truck stop as opposed to just a gas station or convenience store? I don't...
There is a definition of truck stop and in trying to get my technical difficulty sorted out, I ended up closing out a bunch of windows. But, there is a definition for truck stop in our land development ordinance and if you give me just a moment, I can pull that up here. And I apologize again. Those technical difficulties threw off everything that I had ready to go for the meeting. So, in our LDO, we have a use table definition, a use where the primary function is providing fuel and other services to semi or tractor-trailer trucks. A truck wash or a restaurant may be a secondary use. So if we go to the site plan, can see that there is portion of the site. Come on, it's going to do this again now, isn't it? I apologize. I do not know why this operating this evening. All right, so as you can see on the site plan, there is an area on the west side that is primarily designed and designated for fueling and servicing of 18-wheeler and semi trucks along with parking specifically for those types of vehicles. That's what pushes this out of just a gas station and into a truck stop.
So the... What you referenced earlier, it said the primary use is for semi trucks and trailers. So, does this, because they have the parking for truck stops or for trucks, make it designated as a primary use? Or is that just something that's assumed? Is there other businesses in Minot that have, that aren't designated a truck stop that have parking for semis?
Well, I guess the logic behind it is there is a section of the site that is specifically designed for servicing and fueling of trucks. And the primary use of that portion of the site is tailored towards trucks. Yes, it also has amenities for cars and a fueling station and what we would think is a traditional gas station. But there is a portion of the proposed site plan and we're, we kind of review the site plan as a whole, not, you know...
Right, a portion of it. A portion of it, but not, it doesn't necessarily say it's a primary use. And so are there other places in Minot that have, that allow truck parking that aren't designated a truck stop?
I'm unaware of any fueling stations that cater to trucks at this level that are not designated as a truck stop.
Okay, but that would be something that's somewhat contentious of the developer doesn't think it's a truck stop and it's being designated as a truck stop.
I guess if he wants to appeal the decision of staff that this is indeed a truck stop to this commission or the city council, he could and he could get it designated as a gas station.
Okay, thank you. And I have one other question. On line item nine, it said in there that it had to be... Could you pull that up for me, please? On the staff recommendations, number nine. That it had to be approved by the city and North Dakota DOT. Is that, is that always a requirement that ND DOT has to approve something like this as well?
I would defer to the engineering staff on that question.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Trudell, only adjacent to DOT highways. So a traffic study on any other city street would only be approved by city staff, but if it's adjacent to US highways, so Broadway, British Expressway, or Valley Street, then joint approval by DOT is necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Feel free to come up. If you can, you can put your name on the... I think we got a sign-up sheet there and then also state your name. That would help us out.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Chairman. So my name is John Coughlin and my business partner is Jim Myers. And by way of introduction, just a little bit about us. We have, I myself, born and raised in Minot. We have been in Minot as developers for 49 years, believe it or not. And I have notes, kind of chicken scratch notes here. But we are... I'm sorry?
Emily, can you guys hear okay back there? Or does he need to pull it back up? You're okay? Okay. We've had issues in the past. I apologize.
Okay.
You can also raise the rostrum if you'd like. There is a thing that'll get it higher, too. From one tall person to another, that's a great tool.
That puts that mic in perspective.
There you go.
Helps you with the notes, too.
So, Jim and I are the owners of Metal Arc Holdings, for the record. So, I mentioned that we've been in business for 49 years. I'd like to give you just a little background. We have been doing construction and real estate development, mainly in Minot, Bismarck, Fargo, and Grand Forks. Times, El Outo State. We've done things heavy municipal, such as sewer, water, storm sewer. We've done military construction over the last 49 years, DOT highway construction. And of course, we've done homes, condos, townhouses, apartments, hotels, and commercial and industrial work. And of course, land development. In the land development world, we've done residential subdivisions, mobile home parks, industrial and commercial land development. And being that I've been in the business for 49 years, I'd like to ask you to indulge me in just a little couple of cute vignettes, if you would. And they're kind of cute. You'll get to know what, how we do business. So the first little story I'd like to tell is John and Margaret Holback and they had an 80-acre parcel of land immediately adjacent to Minot annexable. And being family friends, I approached them and I said, "John and Margaret, if you ever want to sell your 80-acre parcel, I would be interested in buying it." Well, it turns out they did want to sell it and so we actually purchased it. We closed on the deal. And after closing, John and Margaret walked up to me and they said, "John, I've got one favor to ask of you, and that is could we stay here until we can no longer, until we're no longer able to physically stay here?" And they were like 99 and 98 years old. And I thought, well, of course, they can stay here. So I said, "John and Margaret, you can stay here as long as you possibly can. You have my word." Little did I know that they would be there, what, four, five more years? So anyway, all good, very happy for them, but just a cute story, a little development story. Another good one is, so we bought 90 acres of land on North Hill and we developed it into an industrial park. It was called Northern Plains Energy Park. And one of our first clients was going, or we were trying to recruit Schlumberger. And so this vice president of Schlumberger flies up from Houston and we meet on the site and I show him the site and the building that were proposed, or would he like any changes because we could build the suit? And so things are going pretty good. But then he says to me, "Tell me, why should I come to Minot? I can go other places." And I thought for a minute and I said, "Well, one thing, we have a state-of-the-art hospital that has a Level 2 trauma center and that hospital will be able to take care of your people under any circumstance." Also, we have a fantastic university, great professors, right in town, and it's affordable. And we have an international airport that we can fly your people all over the world because Schlumberger is worldwide. And also, we have a symphony. Small town like us, we have a symphony. And at that point, his eyes lit up and he said, "That's a sell point." And so we shook hands and we got the deal done with Schlumberger and they've been here in Minot as tenants of ours since we developed the property. Cute story, I thought. Another one was the Wrighton family and the Shriek family and we developed all the property where Home Depot is, all the way from Minor Chrysler Center up to Stabridge Suites Hotel. We called it Broadway Center. And a lot of dealing, you may have seen in ancient history, the the taking down of those three big radio towers and the video coverage of it is really exciting. But as we got that put together, one of our first clients in that development was Holiday Station Store. And we got to know them, they got to know us, and one of the things that we noticed was they were a very respectable corporation. They were good to do business with, honest. And they likewise enjoyed doing business with an honest and respectable developer. So the deal was a very enjoyable and respectful transaction. So we were really happy to see Holiday there. I'm probably rambling, but I just want more story. And that is the story about Ernest and Corinne Livingston. And they had about 130 acres out here on the highway, this piece of a part of it. And I don't, and Ernie and I were longtime friends and he was an older gentleman and we were in the Rotary Club together. And we'd have coffee and I'd say, "Ernie, if you ever have the interest of selling that land, I would be interested in buying it." "Oh," he said, "John," he goes, "I would sell that in a minute to you, but my wife Corinne, no, she, she won't let me sell it." So, "Okay, well, you know, Ernie, I'd be happy to have coffee with her sometime just to get to know her." And he goes, "Oh, no, she's busy. She's vacuuming and stuff." "Okay, no problem." So probably a year went on and Ernie passed away. And of course, went to the funeral and I would say within a week after the funeral, Lonny Tompkins from Tompkins Oral and Darrell Rasmussen from Rasmussen Appraisals teamed up, called me, and said, "John, Corinne Livingston wants to sell you that piece of land." And so we then moved forward and bought this. And this is the very land, I think that was back in 1999, so we've had this a while. But anyway, with that said, those are some of the stories of development over the last 49 years. But you're probably wondering why we're here. Yeah, I think you know why we're here. We've kind of, Jim and I feel that last year, April 4th of '23, you voted, but we don't, number one, we didn't think that you necessarily had all the information that you really needed to make an informed decision. So you now have much more of that information in the fact that you have the traffic impact study. You have a follow-on letter called a traffic letter from the same engineering firm. And so, the problem that occurred was I think you might have thought that you were voting in favor of this wonderful project, but unfortunately, there was a condition that said there will be no access at, anywhere on 13th. And that was basically a deal killer. I knew it at the time. They sort of warned me that that would be a problem. I tried to visit with Lance. I tried to visit with Harold Stewart and didn't seem like anyone was interested in changing that particular position. So, the best I could do was to talk to Holiday and say, "Listen, I think common sense will prevail and we'll get there. Let's just be patient and we'll talk to the city and because obviously, we need to get that traffic impact study." So, they agreed to stay with the program. And finally, on June 23rd, we did get the traffic impact study and it did say that the particular proposal that Holiday proposed that, on that April meeting, was the absolute best, safest, most efficient, and offered the highest level of service at the intersection of 21st and 13th. So, we said, "Well, we should correct this error because the right thing to do is to have access off of 13th." So we looked at some of the history and thought we'd just kind of go over a little bit of the timeline. Kind of, I think what we should do right now is we have just a little bit of information that I'd like to share with you. We have it in paper form, if we may. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody have one?
Yep.
So, if we're just, we'll kind of take what we gave you, kind of page by page. So you'll see the first page here is an email from Holiday Station Store to me telling us that they're not going to come to Minot. And the reason is that they felt that any other solution to the traffic other than the one that they proposed was incorrect. So you can read that. So you can read that. If everyone has had time to read that letter, I can... So I think we're, we're looking at a, at a very high-quality corporation that is looking to come to Minot. The site that they have selected and have agreed with me on is really the, that is the highest and best use for that particular site. They're a great corporation. I actually think that putting the truck island separate from gas pumps, I think, is a good planning. So in my guesstimate of how much they're going to invest, I would say that they're going to invest, or they would have invested twenty million dollars into this site by the time they're done. It would also create jobs and also tax revenue. And my guesstimate of the tax revenue is between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars per year. And I think of that in ten-year blocks, and I think of that as three to four million dollars in local coffers in tax revenue. And so it's, it is economic development in itself. So we're on, we've gotten a letter. We know they're saying they're not coming, however. We've had a year, actually, I've been working with them now. In addition to the last few years back, now I've been working with them for two years, and frankly, they probably would have left sooner, except that I have said, "Let's work this out. Stay with us here in Minot." So we're at this point where they are kind of considering leaving. I did ask them to, "Well, let me take this back to the planning commission because I don't think the planning commission had all the information that they truly needed to make an informed decision." So that's where we're at tonight. So if I could ask you to go to the second page in that little package, you'll see the planning commission, meeting of April four, your minutes from over a year ago when you did this. And if you turn to page five, you'll see that this is our, our agenda item. And there's a lot of information in there. But if you turn to page seven, you'll see that I've highlighted line six. And that line says, "The potential for a controlled access, write-in only, on Thirteenth Street will be evaluated as part of the traffic impact study, and the access would have to be approved by city and NDDOT." So that makes sense. Traffic impact study should be done, and it should prove that that's the right thing. So Holiday was good with that. Everybody thought that was good. You guys voted on it. But if you look at the next piece of paper in your pack, in your stack there, you'll see the actual conditional use permit that Chairman Alfredo signed. And no offense, Chairman, but, because I would have done the exact same thing, so... But you'll see that number six is different. Now, instead of waiting for the traffic impact study, it says, "There shall be no access points on Thirteenth." And then I highlighted "per city ordinance." And so I didn't understand how that change happened. This was both on the same evening of April fourth. I don't understand how that happened. But that was the deal killer, right there. The impact, the way you voted was the right thing to do, but this conditional use permit, line item six, killed the deal. Now I got them to stay for another year of discussions and negotiations with the city and DOT. But we really didn't, we didn't get to the point of the best solution for the traffic. So between not having the, having access at that time to the traffic impact study and this strange event, we said, "We need to go back to the planning commission and start over and see if we can't correct this wrong." So that's what we're doing here today. The next thing in your stack is a site plan of that, and it's the proposal that they made back with you back in April of last year. If you look, if you really dig deep, you'll see that back then it was called five-point-one, and this one's called five-point-two. They are identical, except for the changes of, they have that black north-up arrow down in the lower right corner. That was added. And then if you look just a little above that and to the right, you'll see an approved stamp. This is the only plan that has ever been approved by Holiday. You'll see a lot, and you might not have seen a lot of other ones, but there have been more than, more than a half a dozen iterations. Some of them very crude at the beginning, working that this way. Other iterations that transpired because Jim Gepner is this real estate guy for Holiday. And his job was to come to Minot and try to secure a piece of property and build this wonderful facility. But he needed to know what the city would allow. So, "Okay, we have to do this. I'm saying, let's work on it." Many plans were drawn based on cities' requests and whatnot. Jim even went to DRT because he needs to know what all does Holiday need to do to come to Minot. So he got a pretty good feel for what he needed to do. He took that package back to his investment committee, and they looked at that and they said, "No way. That's improper, and we can't do that." So, so that's when they decided that they're not coming to Minot unless we do it the right way. So here we are, trying to, trying to make it right. I don't know. I think I also included a timeline of events. It's kind of just a secondary piece of paper. Does everybody have that in their little packet there? So it'll help if you have questions. It kind of tells you how this unfolded over the last, frankly, two years. So... With that, missing anything, Jim? So you do have access to the traffic study in your packet, and I had an opportunity to give a couple of traffic studies to a couple of you. And if you did get a chance to read it, and I would hope that you did, it really clearly states that a write-in-only, southbound write-in-only off of Thirteenth is the safest, the most efficient, offering the highest level of service at the intersection of Twenty-first and Thirteenth. So I guess we just want to do the right thing. And if you look at the traffic letter, that was a follow-up that Lance Meyer had requested. And so that letter reiterates that it's the best. They've looked back at it again. Another little detail, I actually hired a engineering firm, local North Dakota engineering firm, that had an expert traffic engineer on staff. And I hired them to review the traffic impact study, the plan. Is there anything that we're doing wrong? Is there anything that we can improve? Are there alternatives? What, and so I hired those people after they had a chance to absorb and, and study it. We had a telephone conference, and the traffic engineer said, basically, "You have the best plan. The traffic impact study is correct. I cannot find a better solution to increase traffic due to your, due to the new development." So here we are. We're asking you to approve this project, approve this conditional use exactly like you did a year ago. But I'm telling you right now that if it says no access on Thirteenth, we're, you know, kind of going to lose this deal. And it's a very nice deal for Minot to have. So... Anything else? Questions?
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Coughlin while he's up here? I got one, one quick question. Did you get, did you get one of these that we got today? John, did you get a response?
Oh, I am not entirely certain if he did.
It was the next one.
I didn't get one either.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, I, I read it in my email.
And you may get a chance to review that, and then we can come back up to as well. I know it's a lot of reading right on the spot like that.
I have never seen this. I wish I had known.
Okay.
We, we just got it at five-twenty-five as well, so we're all looking at it together.
Okay, so this is all brand-new. Okay. Definitely have to take some time to study that, yeah.
Mr. Coughlin, if, if I can just, again, maybe summarize, look a little bit more meta. Obviously, Circle K isn't able to be here. I'm assuming Circle K isn't able to be here to speak on behalf of this, but I just want to make sure we're looking at the whole plan is really generally supported by, by Circle K, and the only real point of contention is that entrance off of Thirteenth. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. So we don't need to worry about necessarily any of the other plans or designs or anything like that? It's just that, that one particular element of this. Okay, thanks.
That's correct, yep.
Any further questions for Mr. Coughlin at the moment?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Coughlin, I know you just received that packet that was provided by the city. Maybe you'll know this off the top of your head. One of the things that it says is the corner clearances, the offsets, it seems to be in conflict of how many feet are from the Twenty-first Avenue up to the turning lane? Do you know how, what the distance is?
I think the requirement is two-twenty-five, but I think we might be at three-hundred. That one, I can't guarantee you without studying this a little bit more thoroughly here.
Okay.
So, no, I can't give you accurate. I should look at this, and we should be able to find this on this.
And you can look at it and get back to me. And then one other question. On that turning, turning lane, is it a dedicated turning lane? Like, could you accelerate out of it?
I, no, you cannot. It is dedicated. I don't know if that, you could probably jump out of there, but you'd by, you'd be going five miles an hour. Why would you do that? And so, I mean, so I, in my opinion, it's a dedicated turn lane, and, and it flows without stop into the Holiday Station Store. So... I consider it a dedicated turn lane, and so does the traffic impact study, so...
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Coughlin? So we may call you back up if we got some additional questions. Does anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this agenda item tonight? Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this agenda item?
Hello, Commission. My name is Corby Seward. I am the Minot District Engineer for the NDDOT. And I just wanted to come and support your city staff and just to let you all know that the NDDOT is in opposition of the plan that was submitted. The intersection of Highway two and Thirteenth is on our urban crash, high-crash list. It is number twenty-five in the entire state, so I just want to give you that as well. And, yeah, we've had several meetings, as John was saying, between city staff and the developer throughout the last couple of months. It sounds like almost a year now. Seems like it hasn't been that long, but we worked through a lot of different plans. Not only the district was involved, but the traffic operations down in Bismarck and local government. And we had came up with a different plan, and then all of a sudden, we see this one in the commission meeting minutes, and we're just a little confused. So I figured I'd come and just give my support to the city staff and that the NDDOT is against this plan. So I guess that's all I really had.
Any questions? Vice Street Bowman?
I am not a traffic engineer, so I just have questions for you about some of the details here. So, so right now, you said that Thirty-first and, or sorry, Thirteenth and Twenty-first is the, or is it?
Highway two.
Thirteenth and Highway two?
Yes.
Okay. So from the DOT perspective, are you able to share with us, like, what are the concerns of, of adding this dedicated turn lane versus a dedicated right turn lane onto Twenty-first? Like, how does that, how does that impact the intersection of two and Thirteenth?
If it were to back up and being so close to the intersection, it would negatively impact the turning movements or straight-throughs or whatever movements that are coming down Thirteenth is where it would negatively impact Highway two.
So from the DOT perspective, you, you would be opposed, again, just giving myself some context, you'd be opposed to the, the proposed right-hand turn in the site plan that everyone can see now. Would you also be opposed to a dedicated right-hand turn lane onto Twenty-first?
I think we would be more open to dedicated right on Twenty-first.
Okay. Just because it has a little more distance from the intersection? Okay. Cool. I think that's all of my, my traffic impact questions for now.
I've got a question. You said the, the standards if it backs up.
Yes.
Is that a foreseeable problem that it's going to back up?
I would defer to the city. Our concerns are more of at the intersection, so... I mean, really, if you add more traffic, there would be a potential of a backup.
Okay. So what are the standards for how far the intersect, that turn lane should be then from the intersection?
I would have to defer to the city engineering.
Okay. And then, just for my own edification, you said something about an urban crash, that intersection is?
Yes. The urban high-crash intersections in the entire state. It's number twenty-five on the list. So across the whole entire state, we rank all of our intersections, urban and rural. And on the urban side, this one is the twenty-fifth on the list of high-crash.
Okay. So is there a plan to fix that?
Right now, we will look at our high-crash intersections first, and then we go down the list. So as of right now, we do not have anything in the works for this intersection, but I'm not saying that it couldn't happen sooner or later, depending on several different factors.
Okay, so there's, so there's not currently a, a plan? So there, that this proposed lane wouldn't inhibit the plan because there's not one?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a hypothetical?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I got one question too. So was there any discussion with the developers to improve that whole intersection as a whole while they were doing their right-hand lane as well?
On Highway two?
Highway two and Thir- Highway two and 13th, no?
There was not.
You know, so if we can, kind of a two birds, one stone theory, you know, that, that we all work together and one, we improve the intersection and we still enable, no, there was no conversation there?
No. We just worked on that right end and then we, um, agreed to have that right turn lane, if anything, is the, the plan that I remember is where we settled.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll call you back up if we got anything else. Uh-oh, Lance is bringing a computer up even. Business. Hey Lance?
For my reference, I'm too old to remember everything. Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the planning commissioners, for, for those that don't know me, because I don't come to a lot of planning commission meetings anymore, I'm Lance Meyer, the city engineer. I'm not here to oppose the development. We want the development to happen and, and Mr. Coughlin's correct, this is a, a perfect spot for a gas station and, uh, and truck stop. Um, the only thing that we're concerned from a city staff standpoint is this, uh, this right end. And, you know, we're talking a lot about traffic impact studies and, and, uh, we can get real technical real fast on this stuff. And, uh, if it does get real technical, I got the best traffic engineer in the state of North Dakota sitting in the room, so we can bring him up and, you know, we can talk till we're blue in the face about traffic. But I think when you boil all this down, what we're really talking about is safety and we're trying to keep access points out of what we call the functional area of an intersection. And what does that mean? So within an intersection, if you think about it like this, you have a certain distance back from each side of it where you have people that start making decisions about, am I gonna turn? Am I gonna slow down? Am I gonna, what am I gonna do? Okay? And so the more access points or the more decision points that you put within these functional areas, people have a tendency to start making more mistakes. And so when you start compounding all these things together, that's where your accident rates start to increase. So we as city staff, what we look for when we're, uh, helping developers lay out developments is we look for opportunities to limit access points within these functional areas of intersections. And we have at the city of Minot an access management plan, um, that we try to manage the best that we can to keep these intersections as far away from intersections as possible. Now, it doesn't always work, right? If you look right across the street from this development, what do you see? You see a driveway there. Well, that's because when that roadway was reconstructed many, many years ago, business had an existing access point there. So it doesn't always work out. But when we have opportunities like this where we have new developments, we try to stick to that access management plan because the goal is, for the city, is to not create problems where we don't have them. We don't wanna end up with Broadways where we have access points all over the place and then people can't take left turns or we have a high potential for accidents, right? It's not good for anybody. So in this case, when we start looking at this, well, a right turn would technically fit in that space. It's one, not warranted. When you look at all the warrants and that wasn't studied in the traffic study, even though they say it's, it's a good traffic study, there's some, there's some things here that are missing, that are problematic for us and that's, that's reflected in that letter that we had sent you today. So when you have a chance to read it, um, that's, that's stated in there. It doesn't, doesn't have enough right turns to justify that infrastructure. So that's another thing that we as city staff look at. If, if we, as, as the taxpayers are going to maintain this infrastructure forever after it's put in, do we really need it? Okay, if we do, fine. If we do, then it should be put in the right spot. And we would argue that that's down at the intersection at 21st Avenue where it can serve not only this development, but all the other businesses along 21st Avenue, like the Tire Store, like the two clinics that are along there, um, like the office building, like the Highway Patrol and like one of the parcel that's still undeveloped. Um, we would also argue that if you're going to put the turn lane there, we need to design it such that there's a, what we call a gore area there where it separates that turn lane off of the right turn lane so that if you're parked on 21st Avenue and you're looking to your left because you wanna take a left turn, that turn lane spaced off so you have a good sight distance. Think of it as, uh, some of the new improvements that the DOT did at, uh, we call it Evergreen Avenue, which is over by like Valley, Sport Marine and Homesteaders. If you're coming off the highway, those turn lanes are separated off the highway. Okay, that's how it should be done. The bad way of doing it, if you think about, uh, Broadway and, uh, 40th Avenue outside of Walmart or by Buffalo Wild Wings, the turn lane's right next to the drive lanes. So if you park there and you wanna, now we've restricted that left. But even if you're turning right and you wanna go south on, on Broadway or US eighty-three South and you look back to your left, you can't see that oncoming traffic sometimes because if you have a lot of left or right turns coming, um, those right turns are blocking that through movement. And that's what we're concerned about here is if you have a right turn and it's, it's not in the right spot. Okay? So when you boil all this down, what we're trying to tell you is if the right turn lane isn't warranted, well, don't put it in. Okay? If Holiday or Circle K, um, wants to put the right turn lane, then let's put it in the right spot. Let's put it down at the intersection at, uh, at 21st Avenue, but then let's design it correctly where it has that offset like I had just mentioned. And that's what we had worked with them on, um, and they presented back to us at the DRT meeting here just a couple of months ago, I think it was in May. So it took a while to get there, but we worked with them back and forth because at the end of the day, we as city staff, we wanna have a safe development. We want this to be a successful project for them. But we have a responsibility as city staff for the sixty-five hundred vehicles that travel every day on 13th Street. Right? We gotta make sure those people are safe. And at the end of the day, that's, that's our responsibility as city staff. So, you know, wherever this goes tonight, if it goes to city council and, and they choose to, uh, to grant an access point, that's fine. Uh, that's, they're privy to do that. But as city staff, we need to make sure that we're looking at those sort of things and giving those recommendations based on, based on safety. The study that's been presented that Colliers did, it's not addressing that. It's not looking at traffic pretend, or crash intersections or any of that stuff. That's not reflected in the report. This should be in there. Traffic studies that are, uh, done professionally and done right, they look at accidents. They look at, uh, the corner clearance stuff that we have. They only studied one side. They only looked at 21st Avenue. They didn't look at 13th Street. So they missed the other half of the intersection and that's the, the side of the intersection where their driveways on. So that wasn't in the report. It should have been in there. Okay, so there's things that are missing in that report and that's what concerned us. And that's why that staff wasn't in favor of that report. You have any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them. If we get too technical though, I'm gonna have to phone a friend.
I got a couple here freelance. So the one, you say that there's a missing information. So do we need to go back to the developer and the traffic study and have them questions answered? Do they, does everybody need more time to address all them questions? That is missing, the information that's missing, I think in one of your reports, you'd said that you had reached out and, and asked for it and didn't get that information? Do we, do we need to pressure them a little bit on, more to get some of that stuff?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we've been, we've been asking for this stuff for quite a while and we haven't been getting it. And my assumption is, is, is because it's, it's not going to prove out what they're asking for.
Okay.
And so, uh, at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman, to be honest, y- your city staff isn't going to, isn't going to be in favor of an access point on 13th Street. And, and it's really because it's, it's violating these traffic principles that, that we hold dear because of the safety stuff. That's what all this revolves around for us. We're in favor of the gas station or we're against the access point because of the safety concerns that we have. And so, um, tha- that's really where this lies for us. It's, it's a safety concern. And so as professional engineers who, that's our duty, right? Job number one for us is to look out for public safety. You know, that, that's violating that line for us, so we have to draw that. What other folks on, uh, political bodies do with it after that, that's, that's beyond us.
So just another question on the safety concerns as well, you know, typically on these, uh, large semis making a right turn there on 21st. We've all traveled that, that road. It's very tight. It, it's treacherous most days on a, on a quiet day. So is there any concern of doing a white, uh, when, when they make the wide turns on 21st, is that gonna cause any issues as well when people are trying to turn left on the 13th? I guess that, is that kinda taken care of or into your, your design process of that? So that, you know how semis are. They'll inch over as far as they can until they're almost scraping the paint off your car to make that wide right turn on, and 21st is pretty tight.
It's, it's a potential concern, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, you know, I don't know exactly what that intersection radius is. Most of the intersection radiuses in Minot are designed with what we call a, a twenty-five foot radius. So in the development, you and I and, and most of us living in town here, um, that, that corner radius is a twenty-five foot radius. Um, they might be a little bit larger here, so if they're a good truck driver, they should be able to make that. Um, they may encroach in that left turn lane. Um, if they're not a good driver, um, it could be a little troublesome for them.
Any further questions for Mr. Lance?
I have a question. Can you clarify a little bit more when you said a better right turn lane and closer to 21st Avenue? Do you mean still on 13th or are you talking about on 21st Avenue? Is that where your proposal would be for that ingress?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Iverson, so really where this, where the proposed access point is into the Holiday Store right now, it's about a hundred feet north of the intersection. So all they have to do is take that, that, uh, access point and slide it south a hundred feet. And then you'd be at the intersection. And that's what we're talking about. So just taking that inters, taking that turn lane and sliding the whole works down about a hundred feet. About four car lengths and you're there. That make sense? The very last page of your packet, if you have that with, or one of the last pages, I think, is the, uh, proposed Holiday, the DRT meeting.
The staff report packet is what he's talking about.
Yeah, that's in there. It'll kinda, that depicts what, uh, what we're talking about.
Any additional questions?
Yes. So the, the hundred feet that you referenced, um, so that is the, because it was in conflict to what, uh, Mr. Coughlin had said. They thought it was at three hundred feet north from the intersection at, uh, 21st. Oh, 21st, okay. All right. So the other question I, I had when you were talking about was the, the study doesn't, um, for the, justify it because there's not enough turns, right-hand turns. So the gentleman from the state that had referenced it earlier had said that there's a potential backup. So does that mean that there's not, that there's, we're gonna get more right-hand turns or there's gonna be less? Because it, the backups would happen from the right-hand turns, correct?
Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioner Trudell, I think the concern is, is if drivers start getting confused on the, on the turn lane or there's any kind of congestion or because I drive this road, um, what can happen sometimes is someone wants to take a left turn and go into the tire business on the east side of the roadway is they stop in the roadway, in the through lane, and then all of a sudden people start stacking up behind them. And then it, it starts clogging up the roadway. Now you added another access point on top of that and it just adds to the additional chaos, if you will, in the intersection. So, um, there's an increased potential with another access point for, for more vehicles, um, stacking in there. And that, that's part of our concern.
Thank you. That makes sense. Any other questions for the city engineer?
Chairman, if I could offer, uh, some LDO guidance here for our land development ordinance, it is important to point out, it was included in your staff report. Uh, section four point one dash six E covers design standards specific to uses, commercial uses, and that one is specifically truck stops. So four point one dash six E, uh, G, all access drives shall be subject to approval by the engineering department. Um, I know that Commissioner Trudella asked if it was a convenience store, fuel station or a truck stop. It's important to note that that use specific design standard is also in there, that all access drive. So it's really irrelevant whether it's a fuel station, gas station or a truck stop. Our city engineer has the final approval of all access points for these types of uses. I just wanted to touch on this because our, uh, city engineer Lance had mentioned if it goes to city council. So, uh, just that, that's kind of outside of the authority of the planning commission to set access points for these uses, um, and falls to the engineering department. There is an appeal process in place for administrative decisions like that by our city engineer, but it would not come to the planning commission. It would go to the city council directly. I just wanted to offer that as a land development ordinance guidance for decisions made on, uh, conditional uses for these types of uses.
Thank you. Vice Street Baumann, you?
Um, just wanna confirm, uh, and reaffirm what I heard, that one option that you presented as city staff to the developer and to Circle K, um, was moving that, that dedicated access point a hundred feet to the south so that basically the turn onto 21st and the turn into the, the gas station, the car gas station portion of the development could happen at the same time. Is that correct? You did kind of talk about a, an option, maybe a Plan B or C or D, um, with those two things combining?
Yes. Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioner Baumann, that, that's exactly right. In fact, that plan was presented to us, it's on your screen right now, as part of the, a DRT submittal by Holiday or Circle K, um, here a few months ago. So, you know, that was part of our, our discussion with them, kinda going back and forth because it satisfied our concerns from, from city staff and DOT staff of trying to move that, uh, those conflict points south to the intersection. It, it got rid of the access on 13th Street. They had concerns about circulation on their sites. We said, well, how about we help you out? We add another access location for you onto, um, on the 21st Avenue. So now, instead of, I think, three, now they have four access points. So that was kind of us trying to give them a concession of, if you will, or, or help them with their site designs so that they could be successful with their stores. So, um, where we can, we try to help out, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're conscious and we wanna make sure that the, the public is safe on this.
Um, another follow-up question then. So looking at this particular diagram, um, the, the driver would still need to turn onto 21st and then make a right turn into the, the gas station. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good. Second question, again, just asking clarification from my own understanding. It sounds like the, being number twenty-fifth on highest crash incidences for the state has a lot more to do with this particular intersection with the folks on the east side of the street more than it does people making right turns into 21st. Is that, Mike, is that the correct understanding?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Baumann, y- you gotta look at the intersection, right? So it's, it's 13th Street and, and US two fifty-two. And really what, what makes that intersection rise to the, near the top of the list, so twenty-fifth out of fifty and, well, you know, you're like, well, what's fifty intersections? Well, it's fifty out of thousands of intersections in the state of North Dakota. That's a bad list to be on, okay? There, there's cities that spend literally millions of dollars to get off that list. And so what our concern is, is when you look at the type of accidents that are, that are occurring at that intersection, they're incapacitating accidents. And what that means is when you get hit, you're not walking away. You're being carted off in an ambulance. And these are high-speed, high-impact type of crashes, right? It's a fifty mile an hour speed limit on US two and fifty-two. We all know that no one drives fifty miles an hour on that highway. Um, so when you get T-boned, it's a problem. Now, what staff and DOT's concern is, is the more conflict points that we add to this intersection in the area, it has a potential to, um, create more traffic confusion in the area. it has the potential to, um, create more traffic confusion in the area, which could lead to additional backups onto the highway, which could lead to additional T-bone intersections, which then could lead to more incapacitating, uh, types of accidents, so that's our concern and why, uh, staff is, is concerned from a safety standpoint, now, what we've been doing to try to address the intersection is, um, Stefan has been adjusting, uh, signal timings, and trying to add more, uh, seconds to like yellows and reds to try to get that intersection to clear between the cycles, so that, uh, hopefully we can get rid of some of those red light runners, okay, and, uh, so that's been helping, so we've been, we've been trying to get some of those, um, um, accidents off the record, um, we also have some plans to, uh, change some of the lights to flashing yellow arrows, studies have shown that, um, that has significantly helped, um, people understand, um, the yields when you pull up to intersections with flashing light, or flashing yellow arrows, so we're hoping that those improvements, which are relatively low-cost improvements, can help the overall intersection safety, what we don't wanna do is, is have to look at large structural improvements that cost taxpayers lots of money, so, um, if we have an opportunity to try to, uh, prevent additional accidents at this stage, at the planning stage, that, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Thanks, I, I appreciate the clarification on that, I think I'm, uh, to, you know, share my thoughts a little bit, I, I'm struggling a little bit, i- it sounds like it's a bad intersection regardless of the businesses that are around it, and I, I'm struggling a little bit to, to penalize or be punitive towards a business doing their best plan because the intersection next to it, regardless of what that business is, is struggling, um, so I think I just need to have a little bit more time to wrap my brain around it, but I really appreciate the explanation of, of kind of how and why that intersection got there, or in that list, I should say, thanks.
Any additional questions for City Engineer?
I have one additional question, this might actually be for the DOT representative, he might be the better person to answer this.
Can you pull your microphone a little bit?
Sorry, um, so in regards to the dedicated right-hand turn causing a backup, you know, either going on to Thirteenth through the intersection or onto the highway, if it's dedicated and the driver doesn't have to stop when pulling into that gas station, can you just explain what the thought is, why that could cause a potential backup, is it like the number of vehicles trying to go into the gas station at the same time, or is it just on other data that you guys have researched in the past?
So, um, Commissioner Iverson, um, I think it just, all of the factors put together, so if you do have a right, number one, it's closer to the intersection than a, um, standard right-hand turn onto twenty first, um, having a dedicated right-in for the gas station, you could have, um, backup because of the circulation of the gas station, um, i- there would just be more factors than there is today, I guess is the, the biggest thing that we worry about, you're just adding more and more to that area and that intersection.
I guess a, a follow-up to that is, it doesn't look like there's a tremendous amount of room that they could move that egress a little farther south, but is that a potential fix, that if it was maybe farther from the intersection of the highway and Thirteenth, that it would still be a good turnoff into it off of Thirteenth, but a little bit safer and less likely for backup with more decision room?
I don't know if I should be the one answering that, because it would, it really is the s- city staff that, you know, we work through, um, the city, if the intersection isn't on Highway Two, then we work through, um, the city engineering department, we have local government and traffic operations that are in Bismarck that partake in all these meetings as well, so they would probably be the ones to answer that, but, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, any further questions?
I have a question for Mr. Meyer, if possible. Sorry, we're running you through the wringer today, um, he, uh, my concern is, or moving on, I guess maybe the next concern is about Thirteenth and Twenty First, um, and making sure that those folks who are taking a northbound left-hand turn off of Twenty First are gonna have a clear sightline of any southbound traffic, so they don't get T-barred, or, and, and hit, um, so, my question here is, you know, in, in reading the staff report, one of the concerns it sounds like staff had was about dedicated signage, making sure that semi trucks don't go in there, and then in you talking about things, you also mentioned that you want to make it clear to that left-hand turner off of Twenty First that the person going south is officially in the dedicated right-hand turn lane, and there's no confusion, um, barring moving what they did, uh, or moving the com- person completely out of the way, do we have any low-cost, easy-to-use tools such as, um, you know, r- reflective road bumps, or reflective road, uh, pillars, or sticks even, that would help delineate traffic a little bit for both the southbound traffic, but more importantly, the left-turn traffic off of Twenty First?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Baumann, you know, we've installed those in a, essentially a temporary basis, like in that intersection over by Walmart, the reason we did that is because we're planning a, a reconstruction with the DOT here in hopefully the next several years, and so, we needed a, a low-cost temporary solution, uh, the real solution is to convert that intersection to a three-quarter intersection with concrete medians and whatnot, um, but that's a quarter-million-dollar improvement that would essentially be thrown away, and we're just not going to do that, so, um, this was a low-cost temporary type of solution, uh, what you're asking for can be done, however, with our climate, um, when it comes wintertime, we'd have to pull those, um, this area does have a tendency to, uh, to get snowed in, um, I know Public Works, when they do plow this, um, they had to c- create quite the windrow there on the, on the west side of the roadway, so, um, we need all the room we can get, so they would, I, I think any kind of, um, temporary reflective measure that you're talking about, um, well, it's a good idea, would, would probably be futile for us in the wintertime, that's why, um, what does work better for us, and, and what the DOT and, and us have installed and practiced is, is a, a wider median where you're separating those, those right turn lanes, um, off with some space, and then you paint it with those white chevrons, we call it a gore, in the middle, that works a lot better.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Any additional questions? Okay, call you back, if you've got any questions, thanks Lance.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Okay, anybody wish to speak for or against this agenda item, feel free to come up and state your name?
I am Jim Myers, I'm John Coughlin's business partner, I guess I'll sign in. In listening to this, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that, uh, earlier, um, was asked, how many feet from the Highway Two and Fifty Two is this proposed turn lane, and, uh, it's gonna be three hundred feet as, as drawn here, and so from the Traffic Engineers', uh, study of both the City of Minot rules and the North Dakota DOT rules, he, uh, determined that that was within the allowable distance, the DOT wants at least two hundred feet, and we're three hundred, the city wants two hundred and twenty-five feet, and we're three hundred, and so I guess my point in answering that question that somebody asked earlier was that, um, the reason that we have these rules is so that we don't have to go into details every time we're trying to make up something, the, the engineers and, and other involved people have taken a lot of time to make up these rules in the first place, and so, when a project is designed, the designers and the engineers for the project can look at the rules and say, okay, does this meet it or not, are we meeting the safety standards of the city, are we meeting the safety standards of the DOT or not, and, uh, in this case, we are meeting those, so, I just wanted to point that out, and then I, I wanted to clarify one other point, um, one of the big changes that happens if this access is not granted from Thirteenth, is all of the access to this business comes off Twenty First, and when you look at an aerial view, you might say, well, doesn't look like a big deal, it's just a few hundred feet from where it was supposed to be, but it changes the traffic patterns considerably, and the buyer, the developer, the owner, person who wants to contribute and improve Minot says, that doesn't work for me, so if we're meeting all the specs, we want something that works for them so that they can work for us, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, any questions? Mr. Lance, could I bother you one more time? I think in that pamphlet that we got here earlier, there were some discrepancies on that two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet and the four-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, I just wanted to get your take on that, cause you understand this a lot better than me.
Well, I'm gonna have, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'm gonna have Stefan talk to that, he's a little more versed in, in some of those footages, okay?
Yeah, not a problem at all, thank you.
Jen, or maybe Lance, can we get this document up on the screen?
Which one were you looking for?
One that was emailed today.
Doesn't have a page number, but it, it starts in, uh, the top, it says write-in driveway queuing, I believe, is that the page you're looking for?
Down at the bottom it has the distance.
Jennifer, if you wanna hook up number one again, I have it ready to go for him.
I have page numbers, but there's no page numbers.
Jen, any chance you can give me control, I wanna show one figure, that I think it will really help kinda explain what functional area is, and how we're looking at, I'm gonna say the initial traffic study, looked at half the picture, um, when you look at the full picture, you can kinda see a little bit what we got going on.
Sounds better be lucky than good, right?
Thank you, so kinda what we're talking about here is functional area, corner clearance, where to place a driveway, um, the city often ref- references, it's actually a Minnesota DOT document, on corner clearance, so, it's kinda going back to the same thing, where to put a driveway, um, this figure right here, you almost gotta think about this twice, right, so, first example is where this is US Two, and this is Thirteenth Street, so this is where we're getting the two-twenty-five for D, okay, so, second time we gotta look at it is also for Thirteenth Street and Twenty First, right, cause that's also an intersection, so what we wanna do, imagine this being flipped, if I can flip it, where this is now Thirteenth Street, and this is Twenty First Avenue, so we kinda gave this also, on the initial site plan, this D is the space they are away from Thirteenth Street on Twenty First Avenue, what we also wanna look at is this A, so that kinda brings us back to, you know, if we are three hundred feet from US Two up here, we're only a hundred feet from Twenty First Avenue, which is down here, if I can quickly, real quick, and when we get that four-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, really for, from Twenty First Avenue. On roadways at the posted speed of less than forty-five, which is thirty, or Thirteenth Street, it's four-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, now we can look at this another way as well, and go back to the study, um, this is functional area, they're similar but a little different, um, this red up here was analyzed as part of the traffic study, um, but again, they did not review the functional area of the Thirteenth Street and Twenty First Avenue intersection, when we do that, that is this blue area here, so, they overlap, um, so again, if we superimpose that driveway on there, it's approximately right here, so that brings us into the functional area of, of that intersection, um, does that make sense? I can answer more questions as well, if you, if you have.
Any further questions?
Yeah, so just for clarification then, so the, from Twenty First Avenue going north, it needs to be how many feet?
We would prefer the four-thirty-five, or four-sixty-five, but another way of looking at it is two-hundred-and-sixty-one feet, um, would be the minimum.
Yeah, so you prefer that, but the minimum is, is two-hundred-and-sixty-one?
Correct.
And they're only a hundred feet?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that makes sense, thank you for clarifying that, appreciate it. Any additional questions?
I guess just one last question for Mr. Meyer. So, the Colliers, who, they're also traffic engineers as well, so, really boils down to you just have two professionals that are in conflict with what's the safest way, but the, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, I think that, uh, one is trying to justify a driveway for a development, and our traffic engineers are trying to look at the system as a whole, that's how I would classify that, so, Colliers is tasked with analyzing the traffic, and, uh, I mean, really, if you read this study, um, the entire time is, it's really, they're trying to justify, how can this right turn in work, where as city staff, we're looking at it from, can the right turn lane work, but then also, how does that affect the rest of the system? And throughout the correspondence back to Colliers, the entire time is, you need to be analyzing this, the right turn in, which we said, okay, we'll take a look at it, but you need to look at the entire system as well, because that has to be part of the conversation, and us in the DOT need that information to be able to make an informed decision, and so when we get bits and pieces, um, that's kinda when the red flags go up, and that's been the concern the whole time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you. Okay, public hearing is still open, so if anybody wishes to speak on, uh, for or against this item, they still have the opportunity to speak. I may have one question for- I may have one question for city staff or maybe the city attorney here, just on the, the process of this that I want to understand myself. So I don't know if Doug wants to try it or... So if, as of right now, if we were to, with the CUP, I'm not a hundred percent sure how this works out, so that's why I'm gonna ask. If we were to approve your current recommendations, what's the next step for the developer if, if he did not take a liking to that approval? Does he have the opportunity to appeal to city council?
Chairman Offordall, if you were to adopt staff finding a fact and our recommendation, including the recommendation that no access be granted off of thirteenth street, uh, the applicant has the opportunity within the next ten days to file for an appeal to the city council of that specific condition. It just, they're allowed to either appeal the decision as a whole or its specific conditions. Um, at that point, it would bring it to the city council, who does oversee the engineering department. And as, uh, our city engineer stated, it would be at, at their discretion how they would handle the situation from there.
If we were to remove anything from that conditional use permit recommendations, then he would lose that opportunity for appeal.
Chairman Offordall, if you were to remove conditions or recommendation six from the conditional use permit and approve it without that, the developer could then submit a site plan to the city engineering department with that right turn in dedicated lane. Um, at that time, the city engineering department would set the standards for approval or denial of that site plan. If they were to choose based on the information provided to them to deny the site plan based on that access being there, he would have the opportunity to appeal that administrative decision to the city council. Any direction that we go, the applicant is always given the opportunity to appeal decisions made.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Okay, anybody else want to speak on behalf or against this agenda item?
Chairman Offordall, members of the commission, it's been a while. So I'm John Van Dyke, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Central Dakota Metropolitan Planning Organization. Really, not here to speak necessarily on behalf, but as the prior principal planner, I just wanted to stand for any questions with regard to the previous application that was processed and potentially any process that, that, that went forward. I know that, um, there was some talk about the original conditions of approval were amended the day of, um, the planning commission meeting, the one that was signed. It sounds like there was an administrative error and that you signed a document. Just know that, that is not what was approved by this commission. What was approved, um, allowed the applicant then work with the city engineer with that, um, traffic study. Otherwise, they wouldn't have pursued thirteenth street access, right? So I think everybody was on the same page. Uh, the only thing that was incorrect was that document. It sounds like that was just completely inadvertent error, holds no water whatsoever. I think the only other question that was brought up with regard to why is this a truck stop? I know originally it was evaluated, we just looked at the proportion of land dedicated to the truck stop use. So that's how it was looked. The majority of the, the land area of the site is dedicated to a truck stop, so. Plain and simple how it was done. Happy to stand for any questions. I think maybe the only other thing that I will chime in on, um, specifically related to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Little bit of background, so it's a consortium of local governments, uh, city of Surrey, Burlington, Minot, and then portions of Ward County, all working together to plan the transportation, transportation system regionally. And so what it does is, well, we're, we're going through this metropolitan transportation planning process right now, it just kicked off. I'm certain you will hear a lot more about it and probably be asked to participate, all of you potentially. Um, but just keep in mind that, that a big part of that is, um, identifying goals and strategies and objectives related to our transportation system. And then what that leads to is, uh, Transportation Improvement Program, which is our implementation side. And that's really project prioritization. City of Minot is going to be ultimately competing with other areas of like size, uh, for a limited amount of funding. And so I would just say, whether it's this document, or what, whether it's this application or any other application that's before you, keep that in mind. As I talked to, uh, the applicant, Coughlin, John Coughlin, a couple of weeks ago, my thought is you have two, two studies provided to you, uh, let the nerds hash it out, throw their maths at each other. And then, I mean, that's ultimately, it's up to the engineers to kind of hash it out and figure it out. Um, I think they've done that, but, um, ultimately, at some point though, if you're creating your own problems, keep in mind that eventually you will be at a disadvantage as you're competing with other communities that are, uh, keeping their, following specific standards that they've, they've established. So, you know, every decision has a consequence. So if, if this development doesn't go through and they choose not to locate here, that's, that's an economic development consequence. If it does go forward and there is a safety issue, well, that's a whole separate transportation, you know, safety consequence, right? So I don't think this is an easy decision, it wasn't supposed to be, and that's why we're here for, you know, well past dinnertime. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind and it's, it's important for you to understand that your role as planning commission is going to be evaluating even just different standards. It could be sidewalk standards, when are the sidewalks going to be installed? When are shared use paths going to be required within developments? How are, are these alternative modes of transportation going to be included? These are all not, you know, business friendly or open for business, right? These are basic requirements, but this is, this is supposed to be a, a place that we want to create amenities and, and create more traction, uh, people. That also is economic development, to be fair. So, uh, just keep that in mind. I just wanted to kind of like throw that out there, but if there is some concern specifically with, with how the process played out previously, I'm here to answer those questions, so I'll stand.
Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Van Dyke? Appreciate you coming tonight.
Yeah, it's good to see you all.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against this agenda item? Mr. Coughlin, one more time?
John Coughlin, again. So Mr. Van Dyke kind of spurred a thought that I, uh, had kind of passed by. And he talked about communities are in competition with each other. And I, and if you have your ear to the ground in Minot, the complaint across the city is we are not developing. And, and you can hear people say, go to Bismarck, look at all the development in Bismarck. Well, maybe that's because the, the people that have control, the people that vote, the planning commission or the city council in Bismarck, maybe they are really pro-development. And so they're saying, get this stuff grow, growing and whatnot. So we're competing against Bismarck, Williston, Watford, Dickinson, Grand Forks and Fargo. And we're kind of on the losing edge of that right now. You can go anywhere and we're just getting slaughtered. So, um, we kind of need to be pro-development. If we're going to grow this town and our, um, city manager, Harold Stewart, said, yeah, I remember they were talking budget and he said, what we need to do is we need to grow our tax base. That would help us with our budget problems. Well, this would grow our tax base to the tune of three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. Three to four million over ten years. A lot of this stuff that was said tonight by the city staff and the DOT was, um, hypothetical. And some of it was not actually accurate. We'll have to dig deeper now into this because this was a last minute, uh, piece of information that we have not had a chance to digest. But, um, it just reminded me when Mr. Van Dyke spoke that we're in, we're in this, uh, world of competition and we're not really winning right now. And, and then there's another thing too, as long as I'm at it, and that is, um, we have hired, uh, a regional real estate broker by the name of Jill Dumeland out of Bismarck. And not because we don't love our, our minor real estate, but she is so well-connected regionally. Minnesota, South Dakota, Montana, and she knows all the players. And you guys have probably heard about the ICSC, International Conference of Shopping Centers that is put on annually in Las Vegas. And tens of thousands of corporations come and they do business and negotiate and they say, where are we going next? And what are we going to develop? And I used to go to that and, and, uh, knew quite a few of the players. It doesn't take long to, to meet those people and, and, uh, visit with them. And still know them today, but really, I don't get there as often. And so I trust Jill because she gets there every year, she knows all the players, they trust her, I trust her. So anyway, she tells me, she goes, John, Minot is getting a bad reputation because it is a difficult place to do business and to, you know, to, to grow a business. And, um, and I tell Jill, I say, I know, I certainly feel it myself. And I said, you know, I'd love to pass that information on, could, would you be willing to share that information? The very conversations that you have with these regional corporations that talk about Minot being, eh, don't go to Minot, they're too hard to, to, uh, do business with. So, um, I asked her, would you be willing to share that with Minot's leadership? And she said, absolutely. Here is my direct cellphone number. And of course, I call it all the time and she answers every time, so I know she uses that. She gave that to me and she said, feel, feel free to share that with our city leadership. So I did share that with Brian, with you, you remember that? Uh-uh, you don't remember that, Brian?
Actually, Mr. Coughlin, you never shared the phone number with me. You told me that you'd have her give me a call and I never got a call from her. We, we spoke about this before ICSC back in May.
Are you sure about that, Brian?
I'm sure about that. I don't have her phone number.
We'll have to debate that later, but.
Okay.
That was certainly the intention and I don't know exactly who's right or wrong here, but, okay.
But I've been to ICSC for the last two years, I can tell everybody, I have never heard anything from any retailers about how bad Minot is to do business with. Haven't heard a word about that at all.
Interesting. So, um, I can understand why you would defend Minot. And then, uh, I also gave that number to our mayor and to the chairman of the, um, city council, Mark, Mark Janser. And I asked her if any of you have called and she said none, but you might be correct. We'll have to, I, I have notes, I remember exactly where I was sitting when I was talking with you about that, so. Okay, well, anyway, and then the, the only other thing is there was quite a bit of talk about crash data on that intersection and why, why it became the twenty-fifth most dangerous intersection in North Dakota. But I would like to ask, um, our experts if they would share the exact details of those three crashes that made us the twenty-fifth, uh, deal. Does anyone willing to share that information? Orby, you certainly would. Stefan?
The city and the state can certainly share the crash report. Um, it may not say who exactly is on there, but it'll give the description and the severity of the accidents on there. So we can pull that for both. Um, I believe it's, it was on the twenty-fifth for this past couple of years. And a couple of years ago before, it was also number twenty-seven. So we can try to pull the crash data for all of those and send that. I don't know if you want it sent to yourself or we can share that with, with planning commission, certainly.
It's actually in their packet.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The report as shared was included as an exhibit in the staff report packet, yes. The, the NDDOT fifty intersection report was... Uh, give me just a moment, I can likely pull up that up. I have the staff report open somewhere.
We can certainly pull more, I want to say granular information about that. Uh, I will say on a typical traffic study, that is included on there. That pulling the traffic data, crash data and analyzing it. Um, if you look on the state's traffic impact studies for new development template, um, for the ADT that Circle K provides, requesting crash data and doing a crash data analysis is one of those items in there. But it was not done as part of the study. Number twenty-five, yep. So one thing to note here too, is if you look, you know, US two and thirteenth, it may not have the quantity of crashes. It's, it's usually actually one of the smallest quantity, but it has one of the highest severity crashes. Um, twenty crashes right there, seven of them. Four, three of them were incapacitating. That means someone's lost the function of at least something for the rest of their life. Um, could be leg, arm, something. Um, a capacity, where it says number four there, that means they were not able to walk away from the scene. So they were carried away in a stretcher or something else like that. That is a concern of the city. If we do make, you could say add more conflict points to the area. Um, these crashes are not rear ends that we're dealing with here, they're high severity crashes.
I have a question on that. So these high severity crashes, and I'm reading this, were they, it looks like they, they were caused by kind of one-off instances. One is an emergency vehicle, um, crashed into something and then one was a temporary all-way stop? Is that, am I looking at the right information?
That's correct.
So it wasn't, the crashes weren't necessarily caused then by the function of the intersection. It was due to something outside the control of the intersection. Obviously, we're not going to have emergency vehicles crashing into other cars. It just happened to crash in there, it wasn't because of the intersection.
You could, you can almost make that for every crash. Every crash has a human element in there. And these are just, I'm going to say, the characteristics of those couple of crashes, if that makes sense.
Okay.
And we can, this report right here is really a summary. Um, the, the DOT, if, if requested, can provide a, uh, basically a crash report. For that, it'll break it down into more granular, um, types, location, or, I mean, approaches, um, days, months, and it'll give a description of each accident in there as well. Well, that can be requested, um, and, and shared with planning commission if they would like.
Appreciate that, thank you. If any commissioners would like that information, we can reach out and get that. I appreciate that.
From procedural standpoint, um, I wanted to offer up a suggestion to, you can always table this meeting if you have received plenty of additional information that you need to consider over the next month. I think it would be fair to the applicant if that's what they're wanting as well because I know that, that, that report that was submitted by the city of Minot is pretty extensive and then they've got their engineering team that hasn't had a chance to review it. So it might give them a chance to provide a rebuttal as well at next month's meeting. So just something to consider. I don't know what their strategy is for as far as appealing to council or if that's where they want to end up being, so it doesn't matter maybe. But I just wanted to offer that up. As far as the planning commission, there was quite a bit of additional material that was submitted tonight. It might be worthwhile for also the general public too to understand what's going on because there's a lot of documents that are referred to, they're not showing up on the screens. And so it's kind of confusing to see what's being talked about and referred to. Now that I'm sitting on that side of things, that's my observation. So I wanted to provide that, that, that option to you, remind you of that option that's afforded to you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any further discussion for the public hearing? Okay, so you're done, we'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to the commissioners.
Uh, I just have a question.
I just have a question before moving things on. And Mr. Dietrichson, I know you answered this already, and so again, just asking for my own clarification. Approval as is, with no access points, the applicant can, has 10 days to apply for the city council to review that decision and make their own choice. Is that correct?
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, that is correct. There is a 10-day, 10-business-day window for the applicant to apply for an appeal to city council.
Okay. And if recommendation number six is struck, we approve this minus recommendation number six, then it goes to the city council and then the city council will hear the administrative report again from our engineers recommending that the conditional use permit is denied. Is that correct?
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, it would just mean that this conditional use permit that grants entitlements for a truck stop on this property would not include any conditions revolving around access along 13th. And the applicant could submit an application or submit a building permit application that would go through the regular commercial building permit review process and engineering would review its, all of its accesses as a whole and its functionality, where it interacts with the right of way. And they may or may not approve or deny that application. And once we made it to that point, they could then appeal that if that administrative decision were made, could appeal that. It sounds like, I will say, not to speak for our engineers, but it sounds like everything that you've heard out of the city staff tonight.
And then.
Suggests that it would be denied.
One third question procedurally, we could approve and edit line item six and say, access on 13th Street Southeast shall be granted. Is that, that is a thing that can happen, correct?
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, I would again point you back to our land development ordinance that gives the engineering department authority over access placements. I'm not certain that you have the authority to grant an access that is specifically given, that authority is specifically given to the engineering department by our land development ordinance.
Okay. Turn it over to commissioners for a motion. We also have the fourth option that Mr. Van Dyke presented as well. If these guys want more additional information, you could ask about the options, but.
I guess, Mr. Coughlin, if you'd be able to answer, maybe kind of seeing what is laid out, or we can't do that. Never mind. I didn't say that.
My apologies. Public hearing closed, so.
Thank you.
Chairman Alfredo, I guess some clarification from me. I mean, it seems like obviously this is in, it's being contested and the, I think we all know where the city staff is going to stand on granting the access. So what's the best way to proceed for this to get to the city council then and they can make a decision?
I think that's a great question and that was something that's on my mind. Obviously, this has been brewing for a year and a half and I want to be fair and respectful to the developer of if it's, if it's going to go, go, or if it's not going to go, don't go, rather than dragging it out for another month or two. I think procedurally, and colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong, the most expedited way might be to just approve as is with line six in there and then it will get to the next city council meeting and then they will make a decision.
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, probably not the next city council meeting. Staff does need time to prepare memos for, for the city council and bring all of this information, some of which was presented to you for the first time tonight, together and create a memo for the city council so to educate them on all of the information available so that they can ask informed questions. But it would happen within a month. So the quickest, to answer your question, yes, quickest way to bring this to city council and get a decision made on it would be to approve as recommended by the city staff. And if the developer does not like the conditions as they are approved, they have the opportunity to appeal that to the city council immediately.
Thank you.
It sounds either way. I mean, because it's going to be denied, we're just kicking it down the road to be denied.
Right. And I, our developer, our applicant and our city staff have both laid out their arguments for and against. Yeah. I, I think I'm with you in that, that I want to be fair and if regardless of the answer, we want to do it and not kick, not, not wait or dilly-dally. We want to get an answer.
Yeah. I mean, I have so many, I have so many thoughts on that. Like I also want to see something done with the intersection if we have such a concern with the accident situation there because you're right, there's nothing in place for us to not go with at this point. So I would, I mean, there's lots of things happening, but I think for the developer to have the opportunity to move forward, I want it to be faster than, because it's already been, you know, a year and a half. Otherwise, it's just going to be kicked down the road.
Chairman Alfredo, if I could, it just to touch on that point, we now have these wonderful opportunities afforded to us by becoming a metropolitan area and having our MPO and they will be developing and are currently developing a metropolitan transportation plan. And it will encompass all of the intersections and all of our major roadways within our community and start looking at them holistically and how we can make those safety improvements to meet federal performance standards and things of that nature. So we are moving in that direction. No, currently we don't have anything in place, but with our new MPO, we are moving in the direction of having comprehensive planning for our transportation networks.
And a question maybe then that Mr. Dietrichson, you can answer. The city council will look at the recommendations that we've made and they will have, they will be provided all the information that we've been provided and then they will make the decision of whether to keep or not keep line item six or recommendation six.
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, that is correct. They will get all of the information you have seen tonight, all of the recommendations that city staff has been made. We will likely all get to have this conversation again with another body and at the end of that conversation, they will weigh all of the information that has been put before them and they would have the authority to make a decision.
And is our city council bounded or following the same land development ordinance, LDO, that, that we are in making that decision?
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, they are the body that passed the land development ordinance. So they, they're also the body that can amend the land development ordinance. I mean, you're, we're, yes, they are bound by it, but they are also the body that's capable of amending it.
Chairman Alfredo, Mr. Dietrichson, just for my own clarification, regardless of how we vote or how we make this motion with to include number six or to strike it, it's going to go through the same process basically with city council and review and engineering. It's just keeping it in, keeping number six in is going to be the most expedient way to get it to council. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. If they expedite the process, get it in front of city council right now, get a decision as quickly as possible. Giving them a line item to appeal now is, is the quickest way to get there. They'll always have the opportunity to appeal, but what you're essentially doing is however you feel about it, you know how the developer feels about it, you would give them a line item that they can appeal now.
Thank you. Still looking for a motion.
For the sake of time, so that our applicant can get an answer sooner rather than later, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve based on staff recommendations and findings of fact.
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Baumann, second by Commissioner Trudell. Any discussion? Any additional discussion? Okay. Seeing none, call the roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Pontanilla?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Before we move on to agenda item number 5.3, I just want to say thank you for all the information. I sure did learn a lot, so I appreciate it, everybody being prepared. I appreciate you guys for coming in and enjoying the process. Sometimes it doesn't necessarily go the way that we want it to go, but there is a process to this whole thing, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Moving on, agenda item number 5.3. Public hearing request by Lance Meyer, city engineer representing the CRE Prevenir Partners LLC, owner for a request of preliminary plat on property Zoned M1 Light Industrial. Legal description of the property is outlook, out lot 38, last lot A and out lot 42, section 26, township 155 North, range 83 West, Ward County, North Dakota. Property address is 1625 Berdick Expressway West. That will turn it over to staff for findings and report.
All right. Chairman Alfredo, members of the commission. Again, we find our subject property outlined in black and the notification buffer, the 300-foot notification buffer outlined in pink. The property owner rec, is, seeks a recommendation of approval on a preliminary major plat. Here is the 16th Street Edition preliminary plat. Currently, the zoning is M1 Light Industrial. The surrounding area is Zoned A, C2, C4, M1, Public, R1, R2, R3B and R4. It's one of our older neighborhoods. Love that diversity of zoning. Future land use in the area is Light Industrial. Adjacent future land uses are Public, Suburban Residential, General Commercial, Parks and Recreation, Urban Residential, Light Industrial and Riverfront Activation. We have some photos of the subject property primarily showing the area to be subdivided off and developed by the city. Here is the old Nash Finch Building portion of the property in the intersection at 11th Avenue Southwest. Here is the staff's finding of fact. It can be found in the staff's written report. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt staff finding of fact and recommend city council approve the major subdivision preliminary plat for the 16th Street Edition with the condition that the right of way along 16th Street Southwest and required utility easements be dedicated on the final plat. With that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions for city staff? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anybody who wishes to speak for or against? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I move to approve based on staff finding of facts and recommendations.
I'll second.
Who got the second there?
I know.
So we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Pontanilla and second by Commissioner Menham. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, call the roll.
Baumann?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Longton?
Yes.
Menham?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Pontanilla?
Yes.
Trudell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number six, other business. I don't believe we have any other business tonight.
I, I had a question for our staff. Just want to make sure, we talked about some text amendments or proposed text amendment to kind of scour through our, our zoning code to reduce parking requirements where we are able. And I just want to follow up and that's coming in November. Is that when we should expect that?
Chairman Alfredo, Commissioner Baumann, actually you're going to see our fall cleanup text amendment next month along with future land use. Dan worked on our reduction of parking minimums. We are essentially removing parking minimums for our industrial zones and industrial land uses. We are also focused on a specific business industry that has had issues with our parking maximums. We've removed a couple of parking maximums. It's primarily for auto-centric, your shops and your tire stores where we have people that drop their car off the night before and don't pick it up until after work the next day. We found our parking maximums were actually becoming a problem. So we did a little give and take on the parking. We removed some parking minimums, but we also removed some parking maximums for a certain sector as well. You will see that in a comprehensive fall cleanup text amendment next month.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other, other business? Would you like to add something? Oh, okay. Okay. Seeing none, meeting adjourned.